Today is July 30th, 2020. We're going to start with the saying the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America in two Republican public statements. One nation, under God, indivisible, free to his justice. Okay. I want to start by introducing the board members. I'm KP Kelly, I'm the chairman. We have Jim Campbell. Jim, hi Jim. Tim Kelly, Mr. Kelly, how are you? Claire Miller, this is Claire. And Judy Salomon. Where's Judy? Okay, very good, thank you. The town officials. Randy Caplatti. Randy. Debbie Winchell. There she is, okay. Jamie Suck. Hi Jamie. And Allison Weber, Town Clerk. Very good, thank you. We have Christian Daniel.
Yes.
All right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Scott Freeman?
Here.
Okay, and the lady from VIP structures, no?
She is not, no, she will not be here.
Not here, okay. Okay, I think that takes care of everybody. Okay. Tonight we have one item on the agenda, and that's 5538 North Berdick Street LLC. It's a public hearing for the front yard parking lot for a medical building. Debbie, has the notices been published?
Yes, they have.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to waive the reading of the notification?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Tim, a second.
I second it.
Okay, say Jim, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So now I need a motion to open the public hearing on this. A motion, would somebody care to make a motion to open it?
I make a motion to open the public hearing.
Thank you, Judy. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we have, the public meeting is now open on this item. So would, who would, who would like to make the presentation for the applicant?
Kristi Anaher, I'll start with a general overview, and then we'll have Scott Freeman, who's an architect, talk a little bit about the site and the parking. And then Scott Dumas may jump in a little bit, and he's an owner representative and may add some additional facts as we go.
Well, sir, the only issue we have this evening is the parking?
Yep.
We don't, they don't have to go through?
No, we won't, we won't go through the whole site, we're just going to talk about the parking, but help be able to put up the plan to show the parking.
Thank you.
Yep, and we'll try to keep it brief. First of all, thank you very much for just accommodating us tonight. We know everyone has busy schedules in the summer, and, and we just appreciate you giving us the time. The town's been very accommodating through this whole process. So briefly, I'm, I'm an attorney in Syracuse, and Scott Dumas, who's here tonight, is an owner representative, and then Scott Freeman's the architect who's worked with the site plan. I thought it would be best to just give a brief overview of, of the process we've been with the town, the site location, and then the variance we're seeking, and a little bit about the criteria. So as to the, the site, where the site is, is if you're at town center on North Berdick Street, and you're going north on North Berdick, and you have Kohl's on your left, if you know where I am, and the car dealerships, we are essentially continuing north on North Berdick Street, that's North Berdick before it takes a turn to the left or west, we are a, a parcel right there with dead end right into that parcel. Our parcel right now is, has a single family house in it, on it, it's a pretty deteriorated state. It has approximately 4.24 acres of land, and it backs currently, it backs up to the Erie Canal. So behind us is the Erie Canal, North Berdick Street on the, in front of us. So that's our general location, and as I said, it's single family rental property, and we're looking to redevelop the site. So from our process, we started this process back in February, we saw the zone change for the property. The zone we sought was from RA to RM. The town board approved the zone change. Thereafter, we proceeded forward before the planning board for site plan review, and we got into that process, and then we realized, it came to light that we needed a variance for the front yard parking. From the day we started the zone change to current, we've always proposed that the parking be in the front, because it best serves the site and the development of the site and understanding the surrounding properties that we'll talk about in a little bit, and why it makes a lot of sense for this site. So last we were, we're before the planning board for site plan review, and when this issue came up, we had a discussion with the planning board about it, and they provided a recommendation to this board that the, the front yard parking would be recommended. So then we made the application to this board, and we're here tonight. So with regard to the site, that's the history, that's where its location is, and I thought I'd briefly just touch on the criteria for the zone change, unless you guys would rather we deal with that later, we can deal with that later, that's completely up to you, but I can touch on those briefly if you'd like.
I mean, the criterion for the variance?
Yes.
Yes, not the zone change.
Yeah, the criteria.
Yeah, we can, we can go where I want to have a, we can catch that later, yeah.
Okay, okay, so if Scott Freeman could put up just the site plan, just to show you where the parking is in relation to the site, and then we can go through the criteria if you'd like, or whatever the board would like, we can do. Scott, can you share your screen?
Yep, I'm work, I'm doing it, yeah. Can you see it?
Yeah.
Okay, this is the neighborhood plan. We, we did have a site plan meeting with the, the other board, and we, we had some, a bigger parking lot, we reduced some of the parking, so now not, so it is in the front, but we reduced, we removed the parking, this outer edge here, so we created an additional, additional buffer here. So we're, we were in the mid 90s, now we're down to 80 parking spaces in the front, and what I'm going to do now is show you zoomed in.
Scott, are you planning on banking any parking, or is the 80 spaces your max parking you'll ever have on this site?
I think we're going to go, Scott, help, help me out if needed, but I think we're going to go with 80 spaces as our base project, and we might bank eight or probably about 10 or 12 spaces over here if we need them, because what, what could happen is if, if we get busy, we don't want people to park in the road, but we, we do not want to go for an additional variance, so we're not going to encroach on the 40-foot setback. So Scott Dumas, do, we are going to show 12, 12 or 13 banked spaces right here.
Having a hard time visualizing where those would be?
Right, right here, in this green space here. So they'd be behind the 40-foot front yard setback, so when you come in the parking lot, you would get probably four, four or five spaces here on the east side, and then you'd get another, another six or seven over here on the, the south side of the lot. And we will, we'll show like a dashed line within our, within the updated construction document set. And just to, to further.
Also, in the, in the, if, if this variance is granted, it would be in the, the set that's approved by planning board?
That's, yeah, that's fine, we're, we're at, in the process of addressing architectural items, which we're, we're halfway through, we're getting ready to resubmit for that, and we, we, we have, we have a full SWIP, and that's all ready for Mr. Miller, and then we have a full, we have the force main location and construction drawings, and we, we had a preliminary sign-off from, from, from the municipality that we had it in the right location, so, so we're right, right there. We will, we'll be, we will be submitting this, this image plus the land bank spaces.
If I may interrupt, you know, the variance is for parking in the front of the building, not the number of spaces, not whether you bank them or don't bank them. We appreciate the information.
Okay.
So KP, if there might, the reason it might be relevant, and
Okay.
I can, it, remember that as, that a variance like this runs with the land if it, if it is granted, so even if they don't build, someone else could build, and this board may want to consider if there should be conditions on this variance, like, fine, you can put it in the front yard, but you can't have more than 90 spaces, which is what they're proposing.
Ninety, ninety-two.
Ninety-two, okay.
Yeah, twelve, twelve more.
Yeah, no, that would be.
Something like that, just, just for us to consider, or even if in fact this variance is granted, it doesn't exclude them from someday coming back and trying to get parking on the other side. So there might be a condition saying, you know, we're going to give you this variance, but you can't ever park on the Erie Canal side, you know, or the other side of the building. So you have to think that's also a condition that might be imposed.
Well, there's already a condition as far as the percentage of the land that could be covered by the parking area, isn't that right?
Yeah, Jim.
Thirty-five percent.
Yeah, we were at, that's a good number, because that was brought up at the last meeting, and I think we were at, we were like 32% last time, and that was with, with 18 more spaces, so if you took 18 away, you're going to be
Down in the twenties now, probably.
Less than that, but if you add 12 back in, you're not going to exceed 32%, so we are below the 35%.
Before you take away those parking areas, how many are going to be reserved for the
Scott, we, we had all these numbers worked out with the, with the, the new, the new staff coming in, do you have that information at your fingertips, Scott?
Not, not necessarily reserving, but there's about 40 employees anticipated with this new facility.
There would leave like 40 spaces left for, for clients.
Correct, and we'll be parking, the employees.
Everybody drove their car, of all the employees drove.
Aye.
And I guess the last thing I might, just wanted to show you is the, here's a section view, you can zoom in a little bit for the front. Here's, here's Berdick Street. We have, that's the 40-foot buffer there, it's approximately 65 feet from the edge of road to the parking lot, so I just want to put the front parking lot in perspective, that's, that's a significant buffer. You know, there's, there's trees and, and evergreens planted in that front right away, front shoulder slash buffer, and then you get into the parking lot, and then to break up the parking lot, we have these tree islands, and then this is a section drawn right through the, the front, the main entry, which is a little higher here, and then as you work through the site, it slopes in the back, this is our stormwater basin, and there's, there's the Erie Canal, and that's shown right on the, that's a section taken right through here, here's the, so this, this is a 40 to, 40 to 60-foot green space, the parking lot, the building, it cuts right through the, to the Erie Canal.
And I think it's an important thing to note how it, when, when Scott shows that, how it naturally, the topography of the land goes towards the, towards the canal, and to reverse and put the parking in the back is going to require building up and, and causing drainage, it's just not natural for this site, as well as impeding on the concept of the Erie Canal and keeping the natural vegetation in the rear. So we always felt from a design perspective, environmentally conscious, this was the best way to do the site.
Here's, here's the, here's the Erie Canal path over here, here's the canal, we're preserving the native buffer that's off our property, you know, which of course we can't touch, and then we're keeping another buffer on our property, and then the dashed line's the existing grade, when we construct the basin, we're going to push the soil up and put some more plants here, so when you're on the canal, you're going to have a very, very limited, maybe an interrupted filtered view of the building at best, it's going to be very difficult to see the building, and we wanted to keep, we wanted to keep the noise and activity to the front, where the street is and where the parking lot is. We did not want to interrupt the passive recreational, natural area of the back.
Very good. Now, in part of our process, we have the five criteria questions that I need to ask, and if you're through with your presentation, I'd like to ask those questions.
Sure.
And first question, factors to be considered, can this, can the parking be achieved by some other, some other way of doing it? I mean, is it?
And I, and I, I don't know if the board got a copy of my letter on Ju-, July 20th, where I tried to outline our responses to each, but with regard to that one particular, I mean, the word really is feasible, I mean, I, there's, yes, there's a possibility of putting the parking in the back, but from an environmentally conscious design, most a cost-effective way, and least, least site effect, and keeping green space, the most green space, this is the best and most effective plan to do that, so this is the best way to achieve development of this site. Understand, it's a unique site with the Erie Canal behind us, and
Yep, yep, thank you.
Yep, sure.
Now, number two, you think this is going to change the character of the neighborhood? Or does it limit to the nearby properties?
Actually, it's pretty consistent, though the zone is different, the neighboring properties down the road have front yard parking, the car dealerships, Amerique, actually, the retirement community has parking near the road between the building and the road, so it's actually consistent with the neighboring properties.
Okay. Do you, you think this request's variance is substantial?
Actually, I don't think it is, I, I think we believe that it actually reduces the impact compared to if we put the parking in the rear, because it's going to have a substantial impact on, on both neighboring properties, the Erie Canal and, and adjacent properties, and we feel that this is the least substantial way to develop this site with the parking in the front.
All right. Is it going to have any impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood?
We think that this would actually, versus purting in, in the rear, rear will have less of a physical environmental impact, no retaining walls, more green space, less asphalt, less grading, we just think it's just a better design for this site.
And then the, the fifth question, probably the toughest one of them all here, is this self-created?
It, it is, I mean, we are, we're before you tonight for that, but this is, is an area variance, and, and it, again, it's the one that maximizes green space, limits parking, and maintains the existing drainage for the site, so it is, but we feel that the other factors outweigh the, this factor in and of itself.
Okay, thank you. I now want to ask the board members if they've got any questions for you on this matter. Any of the board members have a question?
When we get around to determining whether or not the variance is acted on, who, who are we doing it for? Is it John Messenger? Is it?
Oh.
5538 South North Berdick Street LLC, I mean, who is?
Yeah, and I, and I should outline that in the beginning, and I apologize, we are, 5538 has a contract to buy the land from Messenger, so we, we are the applicant, we've received the approval of Messenger to submit this application, because he is still the property owner, but we're the contract then D.
Well, here's a question for Jamie, then. Jamie?
Yes.
If the, if this variance goes with the land?
Yes.
The owner, so this variance only goes through if this owner buys the property?
No, it, it would be the variance they've consented to the variance request, so it will run with the land, and it will be
Would they buy it or not buy it?
Well, that's, well, that remains to be seen, you know, but that, they have consented to the variance request. So if they, if something goes awry and this group does not buy this, there's still a variance, who knows what will become of it, maybe someone else will come in and build something and put up the, the parking and so forth, which also underscores the fact that possibly there should be conditions with it, in case this does not get developed in this manner that we're seeing here today, or some years down the road, someone tries to do something different with the site even after the variance, so the variance isn't going to go away, so.
So can we word it, the variance, so that it's contingent upon the sale to 5538 North Berdick LLC?
No.
Or not?
No. You muted?
Am I muted?
Oh, there you go, yeah.
No, no, you, no.
Shaking your head, didn't hear anything.
Cannot, the, the, the variance cannot be, this, it's, it's about the land, it's about the use of the land, it's not, this is helpful to us to understand what may, may be put here, but it's, even if it doesn't happen, it's a variance that will run with the land.
Okay. Okay.
So any conditions need to be of a, of a permanent, more generic kind of nature?
And I'd just like to note for the board, and, and I know there's no guarantees in this, obviously, but we have, we are very far along in the site plan process, and we, we are very close to hopefully achieving that with, obviously, the board's review and approval of amended plans, but we're, we're, we've gone a long road here, so, and we would have come earlier, except we didn't realize that this was needed, so.
Yeah, okay. Does that, does that answer the question for you, Jim?
I think so.
Okay. Claire, did you have a question?
No, I did not.
Okay, any other board members have a question?
Yeah, how would you feel as this would impact the properties to the west of it, the two homes that are sitting there, is that going to negatively affect their value or their quality of life based on the way that this property is going to be?
Chris, I'll take that if I could.
Okay, sure.
Absolutely not, I'm a, I'm a commercial broker, and since this has come into the news, for sale signs have actually come up on Fieto's properties coming all the way back down the road, this house has been vacant for, it's been on the market since before we announced this, but I know that a, a price that was offered is passed on, because now the family that owns that, is my understanding, wants more now that this is happening, so the contrary, it's actually, everybody's seeing or anticipating an increase in value.
You're talking about going back south on Berdick?
Correct, as you're coming back down the hill, you're seeing for sales, newly minted for sale signs now all down the road.
I can verify that.
And I think from the west, I think those houses are really rental properties, and I, I think it's a zone, like, we went for the zone change, we talked about changing this to RM, because it's a transition point from Erie Canal to the commercial end, a town center, and I can envision the other properties next to us on the west trying to do the same thing that RM, to soften the transition between the two points.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be nice if that happens that way, yes, yeah. Any other questions from the board members?
Yeah, one other one, so in your plan, you've got what, 27 chairs, it looks like? I think that's what I read.
Roughly, yes.
Is that, is that estimate of 40 employees, is that pretty accurate, or are you thinking, to me, it just seems like that's a little low of an estimation for the number of parking places you're going to need just for your employees alone?
Yeah, no, it's, the general math is, I think it's like three chairs per doctor and assistant as the transition happens, and I'm basing that on, you know, their feedback of what they'll have for employees versus what they have currently as they move, and what I see in the market.
Okay. All right.
One last question, is there, is there any way to reallocate the way that you've got this laid out, where you could do any parking on the side versus in the front, or would that also go into that effect where it would affect the natural elevation and all that as you discussed?
It really would, because you'd have to add retaining walls, no matter where you added them, see where, where Scott currently has that cursor, you'd have to add a retaining wall, at least three levels of retaining wall at that point, which also means pushing out the stormwater facility towards the canal, which will really, see that as pristine, we're trying not to touch that buffer between that stormwater section and the canal.
And we're right on the edge of that 35, 30, the percentage of cover is, is really high, so we, that would push us over the top.
Okay, Tim?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, any other board members with a question? Okay, any, any questions from the general public?
Yes.
Allison, do we have any questions from the public?
We do. Here they are. Why doesn't the LOC select a commercial site for such a large project, or why didn't the LOC select a commercial site for such a large project? What has the Anadaga County Planning Board recommended regarding parking location? Those are commercial, not RM zone properties that you are comparing them to. Where will deliveries be received? No sidewalks to right door and left front door. These comments were all from a concern of citizens.
If I may, there, there's consideration at the various boards, Mr. Chair, men, about anonymous comments, and what, whether they should be considered, or what level of consideration they should be given in this.
Are you saying they don't, they don't leave their name and address?
They do not.
They're just the concerned citizen, period?
That's the name they have entered.
I have to, I have to agree, if, you know, if they were a next-door neighbor, that's something else, but concerned citizen without leaving name and address?
He is stating that the LOC is anonymous, I think it means LLC.
Pardon me?
He says the LLC is anonymous.
The LLC is a formed entity, I mean, at New York state level. I mean, I don't know why we... It's an issue.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting they not be considered. I'm not suggesting they should be considered. But this board needs to establish a policy about that. And maybe there are questions you may ask anyway, but that's...
In my opinion, if they're not leaving their name and address... I'm sorry, I can't put any credence to it. It could be from out of state for all I know. I don't know who they are. If they're really concerned, they'd step up and leave their name and address. Any of the other board members?
I agree with you, KP. I agree that they should state their name and address and what their interest or non-interest is in this versus just putting concerned citizen. I think that enters credence to what it's all about.
Yeah. Those questions apply to the parking area anyways.
He says his name is Scott Dillingham.
Roger, Allison?
Scott Dillingham.
So I think that addresses your concern then about person being identified and...
He states that he owns a commercial property in Fayetteville.
Oh, that's the man that's... Okay. So we do have the man's name and he is from Fayetteville. Is that what you're saying, Allison?
Yes.
I got you. Okay.
With all due respect, I have no issues addressing what we were here for is the parking, about the size of the project, deliveries. Those things have been before the town board. They're currently before the planning board. But as to part... I don't remember hearing much about the parking, but we can address parking issues if this board would like us to.
Okay.
I think, KP, I would agree with Mr. Danaher on that as many of these issues will be site plan issues. But as we reflect, and I don't know if there's any other public comments, so I don't want to interrupt. But as we reflect on moving the parking to a different area, I do think the count and the location and the configuration is within the purview of this board as conditions.
Okay. All right, well...
If any. And again, I'm not saying you should or you shouldn't. I'm just saying that I think they are relevant.
All right. With that information, does any of the other board members have any questions?
Hey, Jamie? When the submission was here, that we received, it was the prior layout. And so it had more parking area down here in the front. So are we considering the amended one of the 80 parking areas? Or are we considering the one that was in the submission with the original 90-something?
Again, we're considering it in a generic way. So this is for information. If, for example, if the board decides that the condition would be they can have no greater than 92 spaces. I think that's what they're saying.
Yeah, 92.
That's correct.
And provided the parking field is X amount back from the road, the setback, right?
Forty feet, yes.
Then that can be a condition. By the way, that happens to be the setback that's required, right? You're not exceeding this.
No.
In that original plan, we exceeded the setback, but we are not seeking that. The plan that's on the screen now is the plan. And I think we're fine with saying 80 spaces, banking 12, and not being in front of the setback or closer to the road than the setback. We have no issues with any of that.
Okay. All right. The board members have any other questions or we all set there?
Is Randy still here? Is Randy still online?
Yep.
Is a parking area considered a structure as far as the 40-foot setback is concerned?
Yes, it's to be part of the whole project. But what they're proposing, they have sufficient parking.
But so even a parking area has to be back 40 feet?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If it's part of the whole project, yes.
Okay, thanks.
I have a question. Is there any lighting through the parking lot or on the roadway leading up to the...
Yes, there's a light pole here, another light pole here, and then there's wall pack lighting here. The lighting, I don't have it at my fingertips, but we did submit that as part of our review package. But yeah, photometric lighting plan will be a final... Will be, has been submitted and will be submitted.
Is it dark sky compliant lighting?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we have the photometrics, all the light levels dissipate before the property line, and it's all dark sky compliant. And yeah, we can make that a condition to share that with you as well.
Okay. All right. I guess we've gone through all the possible questions here. I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
Can you just wait one second? We do have three more for Mr. Dillingham. He said you're comparing to commercial properties that have been parking in front. Where will the sign be? RM requires it to be attached to the building only. And has the young couple under contract for the property next door been notified of your plans?
Well, the plans are public, so anyone can see them. And it's been published multiple times now.
What was your other question about?
He asked about signage because of RM zoning, where the signage would be.
Again, that's something that the planning board is taking out.
That's correct.
The item we're covering this evening is the parking in the front of the building. Okay? Anything else, Allison?
That is it.
Any other public comments? No? We covered them all? Allison?
Yep, yeah. That's it. Randy has his hand up, but I don't know if that's a public hearing matter.
Okay.
No, we can... We'll do that after the public hearing.
All right. So if we're all through with that, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make that motion. Or Chairman, sorry.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Aye.
Aye.
Closed. Very good. For the applicant, what's going to happen is that the board members are now going to talk about what we've heard and talked about this evening so we can make a decision on this, okay? Certainly welcome to listen and so on. But let me open the discussion with the board members by asking the same five criteria questions to the board members, okay? Number one, do you think it's... There's a feasible alternative to this variance? You think they could do the... You think it's reasonable they put the parking someplace else? This is a big one, I believe.
It's planned there.
Anybody?
I like the way it's planned. I think it makes sense to me.
You like that, thank you, Jim.
Yeah.
And it makes sense because... I'd like someone to expound on that a little bit.
It looks like it's clean-looking and there's other... The other businesses and areas have the parking in front too. So it's all consistent, I would say.
I think also by keeping with the grading of the natural property that it also maintains the integrity of the canal behind it too.
Yeah, there's less of a chance of pollution into the canal if the spaces are further away from it.
Yep. Okay, good. You think the change with the parking out front, you think it's going to change the character of the neighborhood or detriment to the nearby properties?
No.
No, because again, to the consistency of what's around it.
Yeah, there's only one residential property left after this one, and that's the house to the west of it. There's two houses to the west. Is that right?
Yes.
And...
Do we know what the zoning is of those two properties, Randy?
I believe it's RA.
The other two are A. But those lots are nowhere near as big as this one is. Okay. Question three. You think this variance is substantial?
No, I don't think it's substantial.
Yeah, thank you, Claire. It's a... You know, moving it is an RM district. I think it makes the property better by doing this. I think when the other properties down the street will come up, we'll probably have the same request. I think... Yeah, I think that... Yeah, okay.
It goes in line with nearby properties, including across the street.
Including across the street. It's a different zone, but I think it's consistent with the commercial neighborhood anyways. Yeah.
Yeah, the aesthetics of it.
Yeah. All right. Number four. You think this will have an impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood? Having the parking up front?
Might be an improvement on what's there now.
Yeah.
Yes. It will be an improvement.
Yeah, yeah. It seems like they've retained that in the back and all. I think they covered that. And then...
Is it fair to say also we were shown a topography plan?
Uh huh.
And the visual aspect of that also lessens the physical impact to the neighborhood?
Yeah, the whole thing is below the street. Everything is just, you know, it's not sitting up on a hill and so on. But anyways, the last question, you think this was self-created?
Yes.
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 Yeah. All right, well, considering these five factors, then we need to answer the question, the benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community? Or it does not outweigh? Do you think it hurts the neighborhood or it doesn't?
It does not hurt the neighborhood. I think it improves it.
So the benefit to the applicant is not the primary factor in this? It's a benefit to the entire neighborhood? Or it's not outweighed?
Yeah, okay. So in that point, then, we'd want to all agree that it's a benefit to the... The benefit to the applicant does outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood or the community? Not since there is one.
At the other end of Burdick Street, 100 Burdick Street, it's in the village, so it's not in the town. But it's a dentist office in the parking area there is in front of the building, not behind it, so...
Right, right. So we all agree that's what we want to give. So when it comes to the question, if the ZBA further finds that a variance for a parking... How should I put that properly? The parking for this building is in the front of the building has presented this evening, I'll say.
Is this an area or a used variance?
It's an area variance.
Area variance.
Yeah, yeah. And do we want to put any conditions on this variance?
No.
I had named a couple. One is if we're going to allow the parking in the front as a variance, should a condition be you straight up can't put it in the back? Because that's what balances it in favor of this property. It's protecting the Erie Canal. But if you say, you know, suddenly they need more parking and they try to put it in the back ever, is that really what we would want? Or should that be a condition?
Well, wouldn't they have to come from another variance for that?
No, they would not.
Well...
Because it's still allowed. It's just that we're allowing it to go in the front.
But if you also have the condition that you can't have more than 35% of the area covered by the parking area? So it's already in front. It's going to be limited how much more they could actually add.
There would be some limit to that, but not entirely.
Well, he's already... Studies like they're down to like 32%, so you have 3% more. I don't know where you'd gain.
Okay. So let's say this deal doesn't go through. And we're saying you can have parking in the front. Now, unless you eliminate that... Eliminate the right to have the parking in the rear, you could have it in both places.
And the condition would be that if we grant the parking in the front of the building, that eliminates the possibility of having parking in the rear of the building?
Correct.
Is that right?
If you put that as a condition.
Does the board members agree with that?
Jamie?
Yes?
If you put a condition on the land that the parking is in front and the project doesn't go through, if the next party comes in and decides to build, wouldn't they have the option to put the parking in front or rear depending on the size of the building? All we're doing is granting the variance for this project to have parking in front?
Yeah. I would beg to differ about... Because you can't presume what might happen, Randy. The next applicant might come in with some parking in the front and some in the back because you haven't limited it.
But the variance goes with the land. So you're granting the ability to have parking in front. By granting that, you don't take the ability away to park in the rear.
That's right.
All you're doing is granting front. So someone could have feasibly front and back.
And I'm just saying, is that what you would ever want on this site? Or let them come back later, put a condition on this and say, we don't ever want to see it? And you know, if they decide they want to change the site plan and put parking in the back, you know, they can do that. It seems to... That it's an either-or proposition. That's up to the board.
I'm going to kind of step up here a little bit and just say that we're going to... It sounds like the board members, and I agree, that we're going to allow the parking in the front for this project and this piece of property. And at this point, I don't see any need for any conditions with all due respect. Does anybody on the board see a need for... Put any conditions on this? Does anybody on the board see a need for, uh, 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 put any conditions on this?
Could we say that the parking area will be constructed to substantially request, reflect the plans as submitted with the project?
Right, that's what I said, yeah.
Now that, that you're gonna have a, a, a little bit more of a trouble with. It has to be. It has to be more, uh, kind of a more generic, um, condition. I mean, you could say it can, it can only be 80 spaces, it can only be in the front. Um, it can only be 40 feet back, things like that.
I, I'm gonna leave, I don't see, um, I'm gonna leave the, the condition or the, uh, the, um, conditions, um, off and just up or down vote on whether the parking's in the front only, okay? There seems to be agreement, there's no significant impact on the environment, therefore I propose, and I'll go to you, Jamie, on the, uh, CCor.
Uh, it's, it's an unlisted action.
Would that be type two?
It, I'm sorry, it, it's a type two. It's an area variance. I'm sorry. I meant to say that.
So no further review is required?
That's correct.
Okay. Based on our discussions, would someone like to make a motion to grant or deny this area variance for this applicant?
I'm still not clear as to who we're granting the variance to. Is it John Messenger because he's the owner? Or is it the 5538 North Burdick LLC?
It is. Chris, you have, you're, you're a contract vendee, correct?
That is correct.
So it, it would be, the variance is granted, um.
The parcel.
To the, to the parcel. So it is really the, the owner, but represented by the contract vendee.
So it'll be 5538 North Burdick LLC as representative of the property owner.
How, how should we word that?
I would word it to the parcel itself, because if it changes hands five times, then you'd have to go back and change your wording because it was changed. Where if, if the wording stays with the parcel, it doesn't matter who the owner is. The variance is with the parcel.
So the, the variance goes to 5538 North Burdick Street, Fayetteville, New York.
Unless, unless Jamie feels differently.
No, I agree.
Okay, so we make the, the variance to 5538 North Burdick LLC.
No.
No, take out the LLC.
5538 North Burdick Street, Fayetteville, New York.
Yeah, but the company is, is the 5538 North Burdick LLC, right?
That's the owner.
That's, that's the proposed owner. We're gonna put the variance on the property itself. The property is 553 North Burdick Street, Fayetteville, New York. No?
I think that's, yes.
All right, we try. All right, Mr. Chairman, I move the zoning board grant an area variance to 5538 North Burdick LLC for the real property located at 5538 North Burdick, Manlius, New York.
That, that's.
Correct property tax number 086 point dash 00 dash 07 point 1. For the purpose of permitting the parking area to be located in front of the building rather than behind the building.
Thank you, Jim. Somebody wanna second that?
And it would be parking in the front yard would be the correct term.
Or can the front yard as opposed to the rear yard?
Somebody wanna second that, please?
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion that Jim Campbell did.
Thank you, Claire. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So the motion carries. We granted the, um, applicant, uh, his request for a variance. And, um, we'll pass this back over to the, uh, planning board with this, uh, uh, approval of the variance. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time this evening. Appreciate it.
Do we have any other business before the board this evening? Like a motion to, uh, adjourn meeting, please?
KP, did Randy have something he wanted to cover?
Randy?
All set.
All set, Randy?
Yeah, I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
I second it.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting is adjourned for this evening.
Thank you, KP.
All right.
Thank you. Bye-bye.